Visitors will retire behind the rail. We will have our invocation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Rabbi Batya Glazer of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Dom. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
At the front of every synagogue, there burns a light. That light reminds us of the presence of God that is with us at all times. The symbol of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia is that light because we each carry that light. Each of you, as elected representatives of the people of Philadelphia, you have a special role, and we are all grateful for that role, for you also carry that light. When the community finishes a book of the five books of Moses, which is read every morning, every Shabbat morning in synagogue, we say, "Chazak, chazak, venit chazek." Be strong, be strong, and we will strengthen one another. And we do need one another, and we do strengthen one another. This past Sunday, I was privileged to be part of an interfaith solidarity vigil at Rodev Shalom Synagogue, where so many members of this body, the government of the city of Philadelphia, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the interfaith community, and the general community came together to strengthen one another. We need one another. This coming Shabbat, Saturday, in synagogue, we are recognizing solidarity Shabbat, and we invite every member of the community to come together with us to remind one another that we are together. As you begin your sacred work today, I want to share the prayer, or one very similar to it, that was read at the Tree of Life synagogue that morning and every Shabbat morning for the leadership of the United States of America. Our God, and God of our ancestors, we ask your blessings for our country, for its government, for its leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Teach them insights from your Torah that they may administer all affairs of state fairly, that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and freedom may forever abide in our midst. Creator of all flesh, bless all the inhabitants of our country with your Spirit. May citizens of all races and creeds forge a common bond in true harmony to banish hatred and bigotry and to safeguard the ideals and free institutions that are the pride and glory of our country. May this land, under your providence, be an influence for good throughout the world, uniting all people in peace and freedom, helping them to fulfill the vision of your prophet. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they experience war anymore. And let us say, amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rabbi. We really appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Counsel, be at ease.
Just one.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 25, 2018, and Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 25, 2018, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 25, 2018. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmembers.
Thank you, Councilman. Let the record reflect that leave shall be granted for Councilman Squilla. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. This time, I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day in spite of this wonderful weather, to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope you stay here today as a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So, we really thank you. I'd like to recognize some students from my district, Franklin Learner Center, visiting us today in the chambers, and it's important because they are embarking on a voting project to get people out and to talk about the importance of voting. So, I would like to recognize them at this time, and now I'm being told that they're not here yet, so we'll recognize them when they get here. Thank you. But I would like to recognize Councilwoman Janie Blackwell at this time.
Mr. President, we were privileged enough to be at a wedding last week. One of the members is, of course, a member of our commission. She's a retired leader, administrator with the Philadelphia school system, and she got married and decided that, they decided that they would spend their first week visiting us, and I'm honored to present to you Dr. Darlene and Jacob Scott.
All right.
Could they stand?
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown.
Good morning. Last week, you, along with Councilman Green and I, were thrilled to announce the, an effort around the installation of solar panels, moving us one step closer to your 10,000 jobs. And this morning, at that press conference, two gentlemen approached us about how city council works. These two gentlemen are making going solar much, much easier, and we want to welcome therefore Lee Roy Taylor, who is the district manager for Vivant Solar, and Eric Wolf, who's the sales manager for Vivant Solar. These men are with an innovative company. These two young men are with an innovative company providing homeowners with simple and affordable clean energy for those of us who want to go solar. This company installs and maintains solar panels on our homes for little or no cost. So, we welcome anybody who wants to learn more about how city council works. Thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations for your great work. And the Chair now recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President.
Morning.
My council colleagues and all in attendance today. In the wake of Saturday's tragedy, we must come together as a diverse body and city and stand as a united front. In order to move forward and end hatred and violence in our world, we must stand together as an entire city first and foremost. Saturday's tragedy marks the largest anti-Semitic attack in American history. As Pittsburgh's oldest Jewish congregation, Tree of Life is known as a peaceful meeting place for all who worship. The people of Pittsburgh will not let this tragedy change that sentiment. As allies and friends to the people of Pittsburgh, we stand together in unity and support against hatred. We need to do better, and we will do better. Thank you, Rabbi Batya Glazer, for joining us today. Your words and your presence provided a sense of strength and healing for all of us. I would like to have a moment of silence to remember the 11 lives tragically lost on October 27, 2018, at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh.
Members, please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution recognizing Richard Cornish. With Mr. Cornish and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. In joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Green, and Councilman O., and Councilman Jones, and Councilwoman Parker, and Councilman Dom.
This is a real pleasure for me. These are gentlemen who've been around a long time. I met them 34, 35 years ago. Many women will remember Zagobes. That was the total experience for African-American women in Center City. When that closed down, the men who came out of it, Frank Altamore and John Toner, are here, and shortly after that, Richard Cornish joined them. And we are here today because I've been part of them all these years, ever since that time. And I heard Richard talking about helping children at Children's Hospital. He has pictures with him now, and if CHOP, if they have arrived, I hope they will join us here as well. He has pictures of young people. I remember hearing about one young lady who said, "I'm going to lose my hair, but until that happens, I want my hair red, and I want it done this way or that way." And you know, it's a special calling when you care enough about people, some very disabled, very ill, to make them feel better and do better because you make them look better. And when Richard got involved in this, finally, after about a year, they made it a formal program at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, which you all know is in my district. And we are just overjoyed, that's right, because I took claim for that look, it's okay. But when you marry talent, when you marry commitment, and when you marry service for others, you know, that's a special calling for me because that's what life is all about. And I am honored to be here to present this resolution signed by all of you in their honor. Resolution recognizing and honoring Richard Cornish for his work in Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, where he gives of his time styling the hair of both patients and caregivers for the salon services program, which raises morale and instills joy and dignity in those receiving his services.
Whereas a native of Oklahoma, Richard Cornish moved to Philadelphia at the age of 18 with big dreams, he began working at the Center City Hair Studio, Panache, as an assistant. And with hard work and dedication, he eventually became one of the city's top hairstylists,
Whereas Mr. Cornish is currently the coordinator for the salon services program at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia affectionately known as CHOP. The program was made possible by the generous donation from the Godshells, a family with their own experience of spending long hours in the hospital looking after their sick child.
And whereas Mr. Cornish started as a volunteer at CHOP until he became an official employee when the salon services program was created, he now works two and a half days a week, providing his hairstyling services to patients and their families in the hospital, and...
Whereas Mr. Cornish and his colleague, Amy Moore, provide special buzz cuts to patients who are suffering from hair loss due to chemotherapy treatment. Additionally, twice a month, they give parents and caregivers in the oncology unit free haircuts and blowouts. This service offers a much-needed moment of relaxation to those who are continually putting their needs aside for the benefit of their loved ones, and...
Whereas additionally, Mr. Cornish provides his services to other units in the hospital, including the rehab unit, where a new cut can help uplift a teenager recovering from addiction. He also consults with transgender youth and assists them in creating their new looks that are more aligned with their gender identity, and...
Whereas these pop-up salons at CHOP give caregivers and patients hope and enable many of the patients to feel more like everyday people and temporarily forget their surroundings,
Whereas Mr. Cornish has expressed that this service is important because these people don't take care of themselves, it's something that if these people don't take care of themselves, it's something that makes me feel amazing because I get to give my gift to those people who are probably in more need of that gift than anyone, and...
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors Richard Cornish for his work in Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, where he gives his time styling the hair of both patients and caregivers for the salon services program, which raises morale and instills joy and dignity in those receiving his services.
Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Richard Cornish as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition, and let me say, after some 34 years, these are my friends. We love them. Thank you.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Cornish for remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, President Clark, all of the city council. I am privileged to be part of such a forward-thinking organization like Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. To be able to provide salon services to these patients, caregivers, siblings in a hospital setting is truly empowering, uplifting, and healing for the whole family unit. We at CHOP are the only hospital that performs this service in this way. I have met some of the most amazing people on this journey. I would also like to thank Panache Hair Design and Frank and John. Without their support, I would not be able to do this. I would like to thank the leadership of CHOP. Amy Moore, this should be you up here. Without your guidance, your intellect, your passion, and you, this would not be possible. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Counsel, be at ease. May Mr. Decker please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on October 31, 2018, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at a session on October 18, 2018. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body and ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Energy Authority to purchase electricity and certain attributes and benefits related to the generation of such electricity from a solar energy facility, Atom Solar, for use at and in connection with city facilities. And an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Service and Other Businesses" by amending Section 9, 612 entitled "Fences Around Automobile Wrecking Yards and Junk Yards and Buildings," and Section 9, 613 entitled "Junk Dealers" to change the section titles, add definitions, update requirements for waste handling facilities, licenses, and salvage transactions. And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner and the Director of Commerce to enter into a concession agreement for the development, management, and operation of an airport advertising program at Philadelphia International Airport. And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, and motor fuel for the city, in city facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one bill this morning, co-sponsored by council members, Councilwoman Bass and Councilwoman, Councilman Derek Green.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Energy Authority to purchase electricity and certain attributes and benefits related to the generation of such electricity from a solar energy facility, Atom Solar, for use at and in connection with city facilities.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Brown Street and Broad Street, Russell Street and Germantown Avenue, Rush Street and Park Avenue.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Henry Avenue, Railroad Right-of-Way, and Scott's Lane.
Refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I do respond to all...
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Parkside Avenue, 42nd Street, Girard Avenue, and Belmont Avenue.
Refer to committee, and Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer two bills and one privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Chapter 10, 2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Hate Crimes" to increase the scope of eligible crimes and to provide for additional penalties for criminal conduct motivated by hatred toward certain characteristics of other persons.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Tolbit Street, Torresdale Avenue, Pennyback Street, and the Delaware Expressway.
Also refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing December 5 as AFL-CIO Day in Philadelphia in honor of the decades of tireless work that the American Federation of Labor and Congress of Industrial Organizations has done on behalf of working Philadelphians and Americans.
And that will be on today's calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have five bills.
And ordinance authorizing the water commissioner, the revenue commissioner, and the procurement commissioner on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority pursuant to which the city will assume certain obligations under a contract the authority will enter into with Census USA Incorporated to provide, install, maintain, and operate facilities and equipment for the automated collection and delivery of water usage dated to the Revenue Department or other designated city department.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 15th Street, Carpenter Street, Grace Ferry Avenue, 34th Street, the Schuylkill Expressway, 28th Street, Porter Street, Dover Street, Passyunk Avenue, and Wolf Street, and amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500 entitled 'Overlay Zoning Districts' by creating an overlay zoning district entitled PGO Point Breeze and Grace Ferry Overlay."
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner and the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to enter into a concession agreement for the development, management, and operation of an airport advertising program at Philadelphia International Airport.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the city Commerce Department on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into... to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development and the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau, both for the purpose of hosting the Army-Navy Intercollegiate Football Game in certain years.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, and motor fuel for use by the city in city facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years.
And also refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Can you come back to me, Council President? My apologies.
Give me. Bills. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Council President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill that is being co-sponsored by Councilman Taubinberger and one privilege resolution that's supported by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity, Chapter 10, 800, Safety by adding a new Section 10, 841, entitled Fraudulent Leasing of Residential Property prohibiting conduct related to the fraudulent leasing of residential property.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution celebrating and honoring the life and legacy of Antosaki Shangue, the African-American feminist, poet, and playwright.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privilege resolutions. Both are co-sponsored by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution in solemn remembrance of the 11 lives lost on October 27, 2018 at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and recognizing the need for unity amidst a historic rise in anti-Semitic incidents and pronounced divisiveness in America.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the incredible life of Dr. Richard Rothman, an icon in the field of medicine who passed away on October 21, 2018 at the age of 81 years old.
And also today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions, but on behalf of Councilman Mark Squill, he offers one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14, 906 entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations.
And that will be referred to committee, and that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and it's... Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
My apologies. I have two privilege resolutions and one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by East Luzern Street, G Street, Erie Avenue, and Whittaker Avenue.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the Man Older Adult Center for their 60th anniversary.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Inspector Raymond E. Convery for his service to the City of Philadelphia as he retires.
And that will also be on today's calendar. We will now move to our reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman... Councilman... Councilwoman? Committee report.
Sorry, I didn't even realize I had to say it. Sad, sad.
No problem. And our report from committee, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the committee on finance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
The committee on finance reports one bill out with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the committee on finance, which is referred Bill Number 180870 entitled, an ordinance amending Section 21, 2302 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Form of Fiscal Impact Statements by amending Exhibit A to Add Job Growth or Loss Information. Respectful reports it as considered the same and returns attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
And the chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 180870.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second. I'm sorry. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180870. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenly for a report from the committee of law and government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee on law and government reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The committee on law and government, which is referred Bill Number 180649 entitled an ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter to require certain covered employers to provide fair work-weak employment standards for certain employees, including but not limited to reasonable notice of schedules, rest time between shifts, and opportunities for additional hours, and providing for enforcement and penalties. Respectful reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Bill Number 180649 will be placed on our first reading calendar at our next session of council. Our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had its first reading. It will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions or bills are being called up for second reading and the final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 180958, 180963, 180815-A, and 180648. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before passing any bills or resolutions on our final passage calendar, we'll have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There is a podium, and there is a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Joe Denahell. Commenting on 180351A and 180958.
Morning.
Morning. This is official decree of the people. Remandamus quo warranto as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally, just as Brandeis predicted. Crime is contagious. If the government becomes a lawbreaker, it breeds contempt for the law. It invites every man to be a wall unto himself, invites anarchy. Jerry Sandusky, child abuser; Larry Nassar, Michigan State gymnast abuser. These government employees harm the people while oath-bound officials enable these criminals by failing to prosecute existing law. Public officials are not immune from suit when they transcend their lawful authority by invading constitutional rights. Our governor, senator, mayor, council, and others using HUD, low-income housing money, to build a mall on my stolen home. Opposition to my numerous Seventh Amendment trial by juries appears to create a RICO-style conspiracy to deny rights. The people cannot be denied their God-given right to convict oath-violating officials. The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384. PA Constitution Articles 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 PACSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, Constitution, and law be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, Constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monument of corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
Agbana Hagens. Commenting on 160248.
Actually, it's the 180729. An ordinance amending Section 10...
Sir, this states your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Obona Hagens, H-A-G-I-N-S. So here's the deal. It's Section 10, 710, edited, entitled Dumping and Debris of... and Short Dumping by adding new provisions and amending Section 10, 719 entitled Penalties by further amending the maximum penalties to be assessed, all under certain terms and conditions. I am... I'm opposed to this because we have to get to the solution as to why are people dumping? And to add more money to a fine is not going to stop people from dumping. I am a recycler. I've been recycling in the city and observing trash dumping and short dumping for the last 10 years. And to just throw money at the problem is not going to do it. You know, people have to know where they can dump legally. There also has to be opportunities for people who are dumping less than a ton, okay? Because if someone is dumping a ton or more, they have to go to a certified dumping place and pay like $70 to $90 a ton. So a lot of the so-called jackleg contractors, they're not accumulating that much trash. So they don't want to dump and pay $70 to $90 to pay to dump 200 pounds worth of debris as opposed to a ton. So we really want to look at how we can make it easier for those people to dump, number one, and how the city can gain revenue by providing alternative dumping sites for those who are not accumulating more than a ton. So I would highly recommend that this bill be set aside, you know, to talk about how we can deal with some solutions. And if anyone, any of the council people here, want to sit down with me for some solutions to this problem, because we don't want to always find people. Because if giving someone a ticket would solve a problem, every time I got a parking ticket, I would never get another one. So circumstances and situations is what causes people to do these dumping situations. And the city is just dirty in general, so we need to... And then also, just a certain area, there should be no dumping in the entire city of Philadelphia, not just in designated areas. So with that in mind, I'd really appreciate if you would just reconsider that and come up with a better plan.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you could read the title of 180958. I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the allowance to introduce a bill after the introduction process period of city council.
Certainly. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the bills and resolutions introduced today, I'd like to offer another bill on my behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by the Delaware Expressway, Tolbit Street Extended, Torresdale Avenue, and Pennyback Street Extended.
And that bill will be referred to committee. We will now go back to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, let's read it again. I'll ask you one more time to read the title, 180958.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional fees simple title to certain city owner lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 43rd ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180963.
A resolution requesting that the city controller conduct an information systems performance audit of the city's technological infrastructure.
And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I move the resolution be adopted.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180815A.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of 20th Street and Brown Street, WBEA Street and Montgomery Avenue, 28th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, 23rd Street and Parrish Street, Mount Vernon Street and 11th Street, Harper Street and 29th Street, Brown Street, and 23rd Street.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenly. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Nae Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and ayes are 1. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180648.
An ordinance amending Title 9, Chapter 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to establish a license and related requirements for tire dealers.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenly. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Kuna Nae Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and ayes are 1. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative to bill pass it. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing December 5th as AFL-CIO Day in Philadelphia in honor of the decades of tireless work that the American Federation of Labor and Congress of Industrial Organizations has done on behalf of working Philadelphians and Americans introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Man Older Adult Center for their 60th anniversary introduced by... anniversary introduced by Councilwoman Guneane Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Guneane Sanchez.
And I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Inspector Raymond E. Congry for his service to the city of Philadelphia as he retires introduced by Councilwoman Guneane Sanchez.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Guneane Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution celebrating and honoring the life and legacy of N. Tzaki Shange, the African-American feminist, poet, and playwright introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution in solemn remembrance of the eleven lives lost on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and recognizing the need for unity amidst a historic rise in anti-Semitic incidents and pronounced divisiveness in America introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the incredible life of Dr. Richard Rothman, an icon in the field of medicine, who passed away on October twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, at the age of eighty-one years old introduced by Councilman Dom. Introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the... I'm stalling. We're waiting for the schoolchildren. Any speeches on behalf of the minority? And Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Very much, Council President. This Sunday, thanks to a lot of work done by you, Council President, and the Philadelphia Veterans Advisory Commission, the city will be hosting the annual Veterans Parade, November the fourth, at twelve P.M. All the council members, of course, all of Philadelphia is welcome and invited to come out and celebrate and commemorate our veterans, starting from City Hall to Independence Mall. People want to gather at Independence Mall, there'll be festivities, a fantastic parade, and other celebratory opportunities, so come on out, twelve o'clock, here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduced legislation defining categories of persons protected from hate crimes in the city of Philadelphia. This new legislation will clarify consequences for crimes motivated by age, race, religion, or national origin. I began looking at this legislation after hearing from many seniors in my district and have been figuring out ways to address some of their concerns and the ongoing safety issues that have been taking place in different neighborhoods. And a few years ago, I don't know if you recall, Councilman Jones and the Public Safety Committee heard, were held hearings, hearing people who have been victims of hate crimes targeted by age and, you know, through various ways, right? Just age through crafty and slick persons that commit crimes and impersonations. So, you know, we were contemplating, you know, ways to figure out how to address these issues back then, and these seniors, who were the foundations of our community, right? They shared their fears that will become targets of the crime because of their age. Not only is it current and any... It's not in any current or any provisions under state or local code which makes targeting of an individual or groups of a crime based on age a crime in itself and based on its own right. So we can't leave our seniors alone. We can't leave them vulnerable this way. This bill is just a step forward to correct the problem that exists. Unfortunately, tragic events in this past week in Pittsburgh and Kentucky are reminders, right, that we must ensure that our hate laws and our hate crimes reflect the values of our city in protecting targeted communities. Even in some cases, they are protected by state hate crime code. That is why myself and colleagues, or colleagues here in this council co-sponsored this bill, are seeking to expand the city's list of eligibility hate crimes based on the included characteristics of age, race, ethnicity, color, religion, and national origin. The Hate Crimes Code is a statement of the values and priorities. We have valued people of all backgrounds. We want our citizens, especially vulnerable and marginalized groups, including our senior citizens, to be confident that the city will stand up and protect them. There is no room for hate or intimidation. A growing vibe in our city is who is growing vibrant in many diversities for hate crimes here in the city of Philadelphia. So we're going to make sure that we send a message loud and clear to our residents and anyone else who is, would even consider on inflicting harm on the most vulnerable people in our city of Philadelphia and targeted groups. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown for her leadership in bringing this bill forward, which established the Philadelphia's Hate Crime Code. The law shined a light in ways that we can lead now and encourage the state to improve its hate crimes code. And I'd like to also thank all the members who are joining us here together in ensuring that we have a up-to-date and reformed hate crime code that truly reflects the diversity and the groups here in the city of Philadelphia that we all represent. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Two weeks ago, I introduced a moratorium on sheriff sales in the city of Philadelphia with the effort to try to collect data that becomes information about the intensity of what's going on. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank the Revenue Department for helping me to gather that data and to share it with my colleagues. So I did a request for information about just municipal water and tax sheriff sales in my district. I did not... I cannot get the camera to come in on this information. There were over three hundred imminently in jeopardy properties in my district that will come under the gavel of sheriff sales shortly. That wasn't the problem for me. If it was spread out evenly around my district, a hundred-and-fifty thousand people, that would be one thing. But if you can see this map, information becomes data, it becomes... Data becomes information and becomes useful when you ask for it visually sometimes. So if you look at some of my poorest areas, which I will not identify publicly, there is an intense level of activity there. Some areas you're very familiar with, because you gave them to me, are equally in jeopardy of so many transactions in a month or a year that it will radically change the character of the neighborhood. So we need to get in front of this before we have vanishing historically significant neighborhoods and make sure that people have every opportunity to get in front of it. We all know that sometimes people can be in denial about their circumstances and running like an ostrich, put their head in the sand, and just hope it goes away. But what we can do, working with the city of Philadelphia, with the Sheriff's Department, is get ahead of it and send street teams to knock on these people's doors and say, "This problem won't go away by itself." A. B, there's some help for you. There are programs that are designed and funded in part by this body that can help you save your home. For my people who hug, and all my colleagues are good, but some of them really hug the folks in jeopardy, and then some of them are more frugal and want to count the taxpayers' money. And I appreciate both of them. But this kind of logic, where we allow this to go on for a sixty-four-hundred-dollar bill, then we create a yearly twelve-thousand-dollar bill because they're homeless, is penny-wise and pound foolish. So I'm going to be bringing more information to this body so we can make credible decisions. I would encourage every district councilperson, every district councilperson, to get a breakdown of a map, to see where it's going down, so you can do the outreach necessary to save your constituents. Thank you, Mr. Pres.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. One of the most exciting things about coming into this council is being part of a body that has worked tirelessly to lift the floor for Philadelphia's most neediest residents that most especially includes some of our workers and in particular emphasizes the value of what it means to support labor in this city. We support labor. We support the rights of working people. We also recognize that those things are not in conflict with good business, that smart businesses, smart business practices, and taking care of your employees go hand-in-hand, and many businesses in this city already do that and support it. And that's why I was really, I wanted to express my gratitude to the Committee on Law and Government, which this week reported out favorably the Fair Work Week legislation. Over six hundred people came into city council, into City Hall that Tuesday afternoon to say that they stood for this bill. That's quite a cross-section of the city of Philadelphia. I, you know, I'm very grateful to all those, all those folks who stood up and to my eight colleagues who are sponsors, to the members of the committee and especially Committee Chairman Bill Greenly, who has championed labor rights for working people in Philadelphia throughout his tenure. But I expect that many of you on this council are going to get quite a few calls in the coming weeks. And I want my fellow colleagues to know that we, my door is open and that we have put in a lot of time into this bill. The push for a Fair Work Week began over a year ago when dozens of organizations came together to form a Fair Work Week coalition driven by the real stories of working Philadelphians. We heard from families about the ways our unstable schedules hurt them, their families and their children, working moms who incur childcare costs or lose childcare subsidies because their shifts and paychecks change so drastically from week to week. I heard from a college student who had to choose between staying in school or working at the job that paid for that school, and he dropped out. I heard from families who can't predict their rent or put food on the table because they don't know how many hours they'll work that week or because their shifts get cut. But we've also heard from businesses. I've met with over eighty businesses. We've held business labor roundtables, and we have changed and edited and evolved this bill into its current state. The bill that you will see and that will debate over the coming weeks has sixty-one substantive and technical amendments to the bill. They reflect a significant level of engagement from businesses, which have not only been heard, they've been at the table. And the dozens of amendments that the committee accepted reflect the sincere respect, engagement, and collaboration that our office has demonstrated from the start. It's important for folks to recognize this bill only applies to hourly workers who make below twenty-four thousand dollars a year. They cannot go above the federal overtime limit. These are our lowest-wage workers. And in a country in which, or in our own city, where we have the lowest unemployment rate and poverty has ingrained itself, it is important to remember that incomes for the top twenty percent in Philadelphia are up thirteen percent, and for the top one percent, they've increased by over thirty-two percent since 2010. We celebrate that. But at the same time, incomes for the bottom sixty percent are the same or have lowered since 2007. While I cannot, and this body cannot, lift the minimum wage for those workers in this city, the next best thing we can do is provide stable schedules that are predictable and sensible, both for business and those workers, through the Fair Work Week legislation. Those workers deserve it. They're asking for it. They have come to us with their stories, and I'm hoping that we can hear them. And as I said, all of this on city council have been in circumstances where we can't please everybody with a piece of legislation. It's just not going to meet everybody's needs. I am committed to getting this legislation right, but I'm also committed to having this council body raise the floor for workers who deserve so much more than they are getting from the wealthiest and most successful and largest businesses in the nation. This only applies to large businesses, two-hundred-and-fifty employees, thirty locations or more nationally. They can subsidize and profit across locations. These workers rely on their jobs day-to-day. So I look forward to the conversation. My door is open to all my colleagues, and please feel free to reach out. Thank you very much, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to thank my colleague, Councilman Dom, for giving us the opportunity to really mourn the tragic event that happened at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Squirrel Hill, Pittsburgh. Also, I want to commend Councilman Heenan for his legislation regarding hate crimes. It's something that we need to do, and they took the leadership on that. Also, finally, on a more positive, less somber perspective, want to thank you, Council President, for your leadership in creating the Philadelphia Energy Authority. Over the past literally two, two-and-a-half weeks, there's been a number of initiatives that have come out of the Energy Authority. One, the Energy Authority received about a one-point-two-five-million-dollar grant from the federal government to enhance the Solarise Philly program. Just recently, the Energy Authority, also working with the Office of Sustainability and Philadelphia Gas Works, were able to achieve and win the Bloomberg American Cities Climate Challenge. We were part of the second round of cities that were selected, which are bringing about two million dollars to the city of Philadelphia to look at sustainable energy ideas for the city of Philadelphia. And then just two days ago, we launched, along with the Energy Authority and Philadelphia Water Department and American Water, the Water Sewer Line Protection Program. This is initiative that I've been looking at for some time when I worked with Councilman Tasco. It's a program that's in a number of cities around the country, the national cities. I know Council member Brian O'Neil's also been pushing this for a number of years. And so, at the announcement a couple of days ago, we provide some more information. Residents will be getting postcards and also letters from my fellow district council member colleagues about this program, and we'll be having a briefing in the caucus room in a few moments after council to provide some more information about this initiative. The main point of this initiative is that the average home in the city of Philadelphia is about eighty-eight years old. And when you think about if you have a water or sewer line that gets interrupted or gets impacted, you're talking about thousands of dollars in repair costs to your water or sewer line that you need every day. This program provides for about eight dollars a month the ability to have your sewer and your water sewer line that is your responsibility protected. We're also working with local contractors, low contracts in the city of Philadelphia to provide them with the opportunity to work on these repair bills. So we'll be having a briefing this afternoon, mainly following counsel. If anyone, under the sound of my voice, wants to sign up for this program, they can always call American Water at one-eight-four-four-seven-six-five-seven-two-six-zero. Once again, that's eight-four-four-seven-six-five-seven-two-six-zero. They can also go to the American Water website, which is www.awrusa.com/philadelphia. And look forward to working with my council colleagues and having a briefing this afternoon in the caucus room. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a great program. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. We would like to thank those who, and I'm talking about Anthony Montero, Michael Cor, Dr. Walter Palmer, people who've come to us to thank us for being involved with the year of the DuBois, and they've come out with the mid-year assessment. And we want to say that we are just honored to try to be a part of this, part of our history for all that they do. history for all that they do, and we are just honored that they have come today and to receive this information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Do you want to speak?
Please.
Yes, please.
This morning, I arrived to give a shout-out and a congratulations to Attorney General Josh Shapiro. He conducted a year-long search to find someone to be brutally honest about the diversity of the Attorney General's office. He made a commitment to hiring people of color and women. However, when he arrived, he saw it was not reflected on their website. He therefore hired Ebony Caldwell as the first officer of diversity and inclusion since the formation of the office in 1683. He has taken diversity from, quote, "nice to have" to an agency priority. Since 2016, his 2016 election, our Attorney General has hired three-fifths of his executive staffers are now female and includes members of the LGBTQ community. More specifically, 16% of all his new hires are people of color. Women hires have increased by 8%. The new Director of Diversity and Inclusion comes with her own experiences that have informed why she believes in Josh Shapiro's demand, as she was one of the very few African-American students at Freedonia State University in New York, where she then left and dropped out because she felt isolated and without a place because of her, because of her who she is, a black female. Before serving as Office of Diversity and Inclusion in the PA AG's office, she worked as the Affirmative Action Coordinator at Monroe University in New York City. So I want to say thank you, Attorney General Shapiro, for honoring the commitment made. Thank you for seeking to change the culture there at the Attorney General's office that's been that way for centuries. And Attorney General Shapiro and Caldwell believe, as I do, in research which tells us that, quote, "non-homogenous groups are simply smarter together." So when you work with people that are different than you and bring different experiences, they push your thinking. The paradigm is shifting, Mr. President, and the good news is that the world is changing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we conclude, I would like to recognize our students from the Franklin Learning Center. I understand they got here just in the nip of time. Please. You got it under the wire. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate what you're doing with respects to voting and all the other issues relating to our election process. Thank you. I want to thank the city commissioner also for her great work. That concludes our speeches. And with that, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
I thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, November 15, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved in properly. Second, council stand adjourned, all those, she say aye? Those opposed, ayes have it, council will stand adjourn until November 15, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. Thank you all very much.